Good evening. My name is Catherine Boggs. Welcome to the 2022 Summit Common Council Candidate Forum Award One. I am from the League of Women Voters of Plainfield. There's no flag in evidence, so we're going to skip the pledge of allegiance for tonight. Before we go any further, I would like to thank the candidates for participating in this important civic event. The timekeepers, Patricia Dixon Black and Catherine Byber, the Hometown TV, HTTV, for recording our discussion, and all of the community members joining us this evening. Now, I would like to read a statement from Lisa Allen, Award Two candidate. Due to a family emergency, I am unable to attend. Thank you to the moderator for reading my statement. I send both my colleagues, Danny O'Sullivan -- I said, sorry. I send both my colleague Danny O'Sullivan and my running mate Delia Hamlet well wishes for tonight. I'm confident it will be a respectful and robust discussion around local issues facing Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this debate tonight, and to all the residents who are watching. A special thank you to all the public servants across Summit who donate their time to make Summit a stronger community. My name is Lisa Allen, and I'm your current councilwoman for Ward Two reelection. Although I'm running unopposed, I humbly ask for your vote on Tuesday, November 8th. I've lived in Summit with my husband and two sons since 2009. When we moved here, my boys were three and five. Today, they are 16 and 18, and almost three of them are at Summit High School. Over my 12 years in Summit, I have volunteered for a variety of community groups, including the CTO, the Summit Park Line, and HTTV. Through these experiences, I've learned excellent towns are not built by accident. They are created by engaged citizens who give back and elect common sense representatives to carry out their will. Representative government is about listening, selflessly responds to all residents' concerns, and advocates for consensus on important projects. Not everyone agrees all the time, but finding common ground is a core tenet to a healthy democracy. Periodically, I hear people criticize Summit simply because of its affluence, but I cherish that my kids grew up in a diverse community that embraces economic, social, and ideological, religious, and racial differences. I am proud to have raised my family here, and that's why I'm running for office again this year. I can't tell you in 30 seconds all the things I would like to do on council, but I will sum up what I focus on and my commitment to you. The board is lost. All right. So tonight, we have two candidates running for one seat to represent Ward One on the Summit Common Council. The candidates are Republican Delia Hamlet, Democrat Danny O'Sullivan. The forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Berkeley Heights and Providence and Summit. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to pull, to provide voters a chance to learn who is running and why, and to provide candidates an opportunity to tell voters where they stand on current issues. The League of Women Voters of New Jersey is a nonpartisan political organization. Elections and voting are core concerns for the League. Leagues are committed to providing fact-based information about issues and the positions candidates take on those issues, to help voters make their own decisions and participate in the electoral process. The League of Women Voters never supports or opposes candidates for office. We also never support a political party. About the broadcasting and recording. A recording of this forum will be available soon on Hometown TV, HTTV, and on YouTube. No recording other than that by HTTV is allowed. The official videotape must be made available in its entirety. So here are some ground rules for tonight's event. There will be no audience participation during this forum. Questions that I posed to the candidates were generated by members of the public and screened by the League to eliminate duplicates and personal attacks, and to ensure that the questions relate to the role of councilperson. Specifically, these questions deal only with those issues that come before the Common Council. The question-and-answer format is as follows. Opening statements. The candidates have two minutes for opening statements. They have 90 seconds to respond to questions. They have 30 seconds for rebuttals, and they have two minutes for closing statements. After a candidate responds to a question, the opponent may comment. Please show your desire to make a rebuttal by raising your hand after the candidate has conceded the answer. Timekeeping. Our timekeepers, Patricia and Catherine, are seated here in the front row. They will display a yellow card warning that 30 seconds remain for you to answer a question. She will hold up a red stop card when your response time is up. To ensure that you each have an equal opportunity to participate, I ask that you please finish your sentence and stop speaking when your time is up. All right. So candidates, are you ready? Timekeepers, are you ready? Okay, here goes. I invite Danny O'Sullivan to begin with his opening statement.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event tonight. Thank you to everybody in this room, and thank you to everybody watching at home. I'm Danny O'Sullivan, and I'm running for reelection to continue on as your Ward One council representative. I'm really proud of what we've accomplished during my first term, and I'm asking for your support so that I can keep working on the issues that matter to all of Summit. Issues that are relevant now and into the future. It's been an honor to serve you and dedicate my time to a city that my family calls home. My wife and I moved to Summit 16 years ago with our three children. We chose Summit for the great schools and the safe community, and as a bonus, we've made lifelong friendships. After we settled into our home, I got involved coaching my kids' sports teams. I taught religious education at St. Teresa's. I have volunteered my time on numerous initiatives, and I served on Summit's Economic Development Advisory Committee, which have all led me to raising my hand to serve on council. These experiences have enabled me to get to know Summit on a personal level and have helped inform my decision-making so that I make the best choices for all of Summit. I'm looking forward to talking about the issues tonight that affect all of us, and I'm hoping to earn your support for reelection. Thank you.
Now, your question.
Good evening. My name is Delia Hamlet, your candidate for Ward One. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this tonight, and all of you for attending. Danny, thank you for your service. I think if there's one thing we can all agree on, it's that it's really good to be back in person, as tight as this is. Many have asked me why I'm running for Common Council, and I wanted to share the reason why. I have no other agenda other than making Summit better. I am honored to have the support from Democrats, Republicans, and independent residents. I have been tremendously inspired by the residents and former elected leaders who have voiced their concerns around many important issues in Summit. You all know who you are, and I applaud your leadership. To give you a mental picture of recent council meetings, if you replay the movie Field of Dreams, you'll find Millie Cooper in there, Al Dill, and thousands of other residents who are literally coming out of the cornfield with different questions. I guess the saying is true, "If you build it, they will come." I'm a Summit mom of three, all who attend the public school system. I'm an Army veteran, and I'm honored to have served overseas during 9/11. They were difficult times, but it shaped me in many different ways, and it reminds me on a daily basis why community is important. When you're fighting for your country, no one asks you what your political party affiliation is. It just doesn't matter. And it doesn't matter in local government. Your main focus is to make sure the troops are safe, everyone is fed, and the mission gets accomplished. I'm a business owner with 40 employees. We're just about to hit our one-year anniversary. Not every day is paradise as a business owner, but I'm solving problems that directly impact our bottom line and our people every day. I have witnessed how wonderful Summit is. In fact, my children all attended nursery school here at CPC. I served on the board at Lincoln Hubbard. I coached basketball here at the Rec Center, and I coached girls on the run. My point is, I know exactly how wonderful Summit is, and that's exactly why I'm so passionate about maintaining the character of our town. That is also why I'm so passionate about making sure there is a public benefit to the residents of Summit for every decision we make.
Thank you, candidates. Now, let's hear from the public. What are they concerned about? Is there one -- this is the first question, and I'm going to ask Delia for you to go first. Is there one particular issue that convinced you to run for Common Council?
The original reason that I ran for Common Council was around safety. I lived on Fernwood Road, and we had had several incidents that many of you are probably aware of, so that really was one of the things that ignited my interest in local politics and really lit a fire for me to serve again. And I would say that I've worked hard to try different initiatives. Actually, recently today, we had another car theft outside Club Pilates, right there in Shop, right? So, you know, I think it's something that is an ongoing issue, and we just have to continue to work with the county and other local officials to combat this problem. And I applaud our police for all the hard work they do. Can't imagine doing their job, and we're really lucky to have them.
Danny?
Thank you. Thank you. That's a great question. So, the one issue that inspired me to run was not one -- it occurred before I came on council. So, my friend Beth Little ran her campaign in 2017, and she ran on full-day kindergarten. And she delivered on that promise. And I have that same belief that good government policy has a role to play in the lives of ordinary citizens. So, that inspired me to try to make a difference. And so, when I ran, one of my issues was outdoor recreation spaces, and I delivered on those promises. We renovated our town pool. It's all brand-new inside. And we delivered on new basketball courts at Memorial, and we delivered on new basketball courts at Tatlock. But I do believe good government policy has a role to play in our lives right here in Summit, and you've seen it on display. Can I -- do we have a rebuttal now, or no?
Yes.
Can I rebuttal? I have a rebuttal on Delia's answer? Okay. So, Delia's comment was, what inspired her to run was the issue of safety. I believe we live in one of the safest communities anywhere in the state of New Jersey, anywhere in this whole country. And you can go through it. If you don't believe me, just go by the numbers. We have the finest police officers. Every category of crime is trending downwards, with the exception of car thefts, which we will probably address later.
May I have a bow?
Yes, you may.
I would have to say that I recently spoke with the Monmouth County Sheriff, and he continued to explain to me -- this call was actually yesterday. And he continued to explain to me that auto theft is one of the number-one problems in the community, especially even down in Monmouth County. We're obviously in Union County, but it is a huge problem, and I would say that a lot of these criminals can be armed. We can't assume they're not armed. And although Summit is one of the safest cities, I completely agree with Danny, I think that we can always make an attempt to continue.
We're going to go on to the second question, and Danny, I will ask you to answer this one first. Summit is known as a sustainable and green city through its various initiatives, including the Green Market, Park Line, and Earth Day Cleaners. That says the recent drought and flash flooding are stark examples of climate change in New Jersey. What citywide environmental initiative would you like to see Summit prioritize going forward?
Thank you for the question. Just so everyone's aware, I was recently endorsed by the Sierra Club of the State of New Jersey. I have had a couple of green initiatives of my own. We continue to plant trees at a rapid pace around town. We have started food composting at the transfer station, and we have planted a tiny forest. All green initiatives. Going forward, in my second term, my main focus, one of my main focuses in my second term, will be to capture federal grant money, and that will come from the Inflation Reduction Act and the infrastructure bill. There's going to be massive amounts of grant money, and we need to convert our city fleet of vehicles to electric. We also need to find a way to have a solar installation so that we're more resilient against power outages in the future. So, those two things.
Delia?
That is a great question, and I think one of the things that Danny has been really good at is all of the green initiatives, and I really give him credit. I actually went to visit the Tiny Forest maybe a week or so ago, and I had the opportunity to learn a lot more about it, because quite honestly, I had not been there. And I also was one of the initial donators to Dr. Ravino's Park Line. So, I'm certainly passionate about the environment, and I think that there are so many things that Summit can do. I think in the Broad Street West proposed project, I would have liked to have seen more green space and more green initiatives with the buildings, which I didn't see, so that was something that I would be passionate about. And I also noticed down at the Tiny Forest, we were talking about how the water, we have to get the water all the way from the top of the community center down to the Tiny Forest. So, when we were down there a week or so ago, there was some talk about potentially bringing the water from another area so that the Tiny Forest could be watered more often. So, I think that would be one of the ideas that I have. And I also sat on a board, sorry, on a call the other day, and they had just so many great ideas about the new grants that we can pursue, and I think that a lot of good things can happen in Summit.
We'll go on to question number three. What specifics -- oh, sorry. Delia, you're on deck for the first answer. What specific solutions do you have that would make social services, food, and shelter available to the homeless people who are in and around the train station?
Sorry. Would you mind repeating the question?
What specific solutions do you have that would make social services, food, and shelter available to the homeless people who are in and around the train station?
I think it's a very important question, and I think we've all noticed that there is certainly an increase at the train station recently. I was actually speaking with someone from Grease today, and they talked about the fact that they had one person last year, that they were able to get a full-time job and move through the program. There are so many things that Grease does to help the homeless, bridges, and we have to continue to advocate for them to get on the road to success, get jobs. And I think there are so many wonderful -- Amanda Block does an amazing job at Grease. I see many of you here in the audience that help out on a daily basis, and I'm passionate about fixing that solution and helping them, just as I did in the military with my soldiers. We are always focused on getting them back on the right track, and it's an important issue, May.
Thank you, Catherine. Specifically, what we've done, we have contracted with Bridgway. They have helped with our mental health services. Specific solutions at the city level is very difficult. We don't have budget money for care of homeless, but I think the overall theme of taking care of people that are homeless is affordable housing. There is not enough affordable housing in New Jersey. There is not enough affordable housing in the city of Summit. And so, part of the reason why we're going down this road of Broad Street West is to add more affordable units, because people fall through the cracks, and they are priced out of places like Summit. And we've seen it time and again. So, am I surprised that there's homeless there? Unfortunately, I am not. But we have solutions on the table to get more affordable housing in this town, and it's desperately needed. And it's obvious to everyone who's looking every day. Every time you walk through the train station, you know, it could happen to anyone.
The one thing I would like to say on this topic, as I go back and forth through the train station a lot and just looking around town, mental health is also a very important component of this. And when I was speaking with some individuals this week from the various different organizations, one of the priorities would be to get a lot of these individuals' mental health. And as most of you know, it is Suicide Awareness Month, and we haven't spent a lot of time talking about that this month. But I would disagree, Danny, a little bit with affordable housing, because I really think that we need to sit down and figure out exactly what our requirement is, because I think it's a little -- I think some people are a little unclear.
Okay. We'll go on to the fourth question, and Danny, I'll ask that you respond to this one first. How can Summit be more welcoming of diversity, equality, and inclusion, and how would you measure success?
Thank you. I don't know if there is a measurement for success. I was proud to support the raising of the pride flag at the community center in my first year on council. We just lit the Hanukkah menorah on the Village Green for the 2020 holiday season. We just celebrated Juneteenth for the first time ever in Summit. These things are indications for anybody driving into Summit for the first time. If you see a pride flag at the community center, you know we are a welcoming community. If you're driving through or you're walking through and celebrating the holiday season, and you see a menorah lit next to a Christmas tree at the Village Green, you know we have diversity, and we care about everybody here. When you celebrate Juneteenth with our African-American community, you know we're making progress on these issues. So, I don't know how you quantify it. And besides that, all of the Asian-American Pacific Islander events that we host, we have a very welcoming community. We had some really robust events on the Village Green this spring, and it was fantastic. So, I don't know how you measure it or quantify it, but I feel it.
I think it's a very important question as well, and as I door knock, I can certainly see how we can probably be more inclusive. I agree with Danny that everything he just said, we do so many great things here in Summit to include everybody and make them a part of our community, because that's what it is. We are one of the most diverse cities that I've ever been in. And the one thing I could recommend that we could do to make people feel more included, one thing I have noticed is that the town council meetings, the minutes are not in Spanish, and I think a lot of the -- or different languages, I think that a lot of people have frustrations over that. And I think it's an easy fix, and we could probably, they would probably feel more included if they could. I think the city's website is obviously in multiple languages, but when you actually get to the meat and potatoes of it, it's only in English. So, I think that would be a really good, easy start, and just a recommendation. But I think everything Danny said is spot-on.
All right. We'll go to the fifth question, and I'll ask Delia to answer this first. What plans do you have for improving pedestrian safety?
Well, I haven't actually sat down and made a formal plan, but what I will tell you is, we talk about it a lot. As many of you know, there was a pedestrian who was hit a few weeks ago, and I think kudos to the mayor. I think she made a statement at the last council meeting where she said, "We are going to be cracking down ticketing more." So, I think that the conversations that a lot of the residents have been having is sinking through, is sinking in. And the mayor actually did a safety Facebook Live post about a week or so ago, and I think that was helpful. I think that everybody needs to slow down. I think unfortunately, we really need to start ticketing, because someone is going to get hurt. And I know one of the other important issues, especially down on Bedford Road, is the children who are going from the high school to the football field. And that is a massive concern, because people are parking on both sides of that road, and it is an accident waiting to happen, and people are fired up down there about that issue. So, that would be one of the ideas.
Thank you for the question, Catherine. Tragic accidents happen. Thankfully, thankfully, the gentleman that was struck the other 10 days or so ago is going to make a full recovery. And a couple of years ago, a crossing guard was struck by a vehicle helping kids across at the middle school. People are driving too fast. They are not paying attention. But overall, our pedestrians are safe. My kids have been walking to school since, you know, well, I can't say for grammar school, because it doesn't count. They'd never have to cross the street. But middle school, from sixth grade on, they crossed Springfield, Broad Street, Morris Avenue twice every day. We're fully confident that we have measures in place, even more so now than ever. There are more sidewalks than ever. We have bumpouts to control speed. We have traffic beacons to help people cross the street. We have narrowed intersections. We have speed humps on Woodland Avenue. We have speed humps on Ashland Road to slow people down. But I think the mayor did say it correctly. People need to slow down. If I drive 25 miles an hour anywhere in town where the speed limit is 25, guaranteed there will be somebody five feet behind me riding my bumper. Guaranteed. People are out of control, and we need to slow down and be mindful. I have a young driver in my house now. I tell him all the time, "Full stops at a stop sign. Look both ways." I think we all need to do that.
Not sure if it's a rebuttal or just another comment. One of the things that I think would be really important, it is a law to wear a bike helmet, and I see so many children not wearing helmets. And my ex-husband actually had a traumatic brain injury. So, I think it's something that the community should focus on and encourage our children to wear helmets more often, because I think that that is absolutely an accident waiting to happen.
The next question, I'm going to ask Danny to respond to first. The Broad Street development plan is now on hold while council looks for options. What modifications would you make to that redevelopment, traffic, and affordable housing?
Thank you, Catherine. Yes, we are on a pause. The steering committee has advised the developers to shrink the project, to come back with something smaller. What would I do? I'm only one voice. I would like to see, and this is my recommendation and my opinion only, I would like to see two four-story buildings with a path in between. We get enough, not as much as I would like, but we get enough affordable housing units out of it. We get market-rate apartments out of it. We get green space. We get sustainability features. Maybe they bury the power lines over there. It's all a negotiation that has to happen. You know, it's been a really difficult process. It's been a democratic process, though. And when you think of democracy, it's the worst form of government except all the others. And this process is the worst process except for all the others. We have made tremendous progress, and I know it's up-and-down progress, and it's not what you want right away, but we have made tremendous progress. I'm proud of where we are. I'm proud of where the project is headed.
Thank you for the question. I think it's certainly a hot issue. I would have to say I respectfully just disagree. I think that the process has not been transparent. I think that 1,700 residents have, or more, have stood up against the project. We have seen countless residents who are peeling back the onion. The topology has been horrendous. The financial advisor was just removed, and now we are starting a process with only a financial committee. I think that it would be wise to consider everything, including not doing the ANOR process, not doing redevelopment under redevelopment law. I think we have to think about all of our options. As I door knock, I meet so many residents who are urban planners, who are architects. I went to Lincoln Hubbard the other day, and the amount of people who have great ideas is amazing. I'm passionate about it. We have a lot of smart people in this community. I think we need to be very specific. I actually had a call with Joe Burgess yesterday around what exactly, where are we at exactly with the affordable housing requirement, because I think a lot of people are confused with the exact number. And I think that that would be helpful, and it would help the community explain. And I actually walked the area a few weeks ago, and I actually have some renderings on what I would like, or what I'm hearing that residents would like.
Yes, go ahead, Danny.
So, we have hired a new financial advisor, that is Akashia Keshia. Jennifer Edwards is leading that firm. We are bringing aboard financial experts who are local to Summit, so I'm thrilled about that. As far as the area in need of redevelopment process, right now, we have control. Everybody in here has control of this project. If we abandon the area in need of redevelopment law, we will lose control, and we don't know what's going to happen then.
Thank you.
I have a rebuttal. I'm sorry.
Oh, yes. Go ahead, please.
I think for those of you who have been following, the Summit residents certainly pushed back because the initial proposal was out of scale and out of character with what the residents wanted. And with all due respect, Danny, it sounds as though, although council is on a pause, I'm not sure if the public has seen any I'm not sure if the public has seen any information regarding this two buildings, four stories with a pass no. And it's frustrating for me as a candidate to have been discussed that information when I don't think anybody has seen those plans.
Just to be clear, this is my opinion and what I'm advocating for. There are no concepts. No one has seen anything. And so I just want to be absolutely clear. This is what my, somebody just, the question was, what is your vision? I think that was the question, and that's why I answered it that way.
I think the important thing that everybody needs to remember or ask themselves is who owns this land? Is it the council or is it the 22,000 residents of Summit? And Danny, maybe you didn't see it, but I totally believe you. But it just creates an area where the residents don't feel like they're included. I'm sorry.
We can, I can go back again. The area, the area in need of redevelopment law allows committees like the one we're forming to come to the table. If this, if this land, city land is sold to a developer, there will be no design, there will be no design advice. There will be no financial advisors from the community coming in to do this. So we're in a good process right now. I'm happy that we have people in this room that are going to be at the table. And the next step, we'll have design people from this room in the next step.
Well, then I think you should definitely vote for Danny, because we totally disagree on this topic. This absolutely needs to be restarted, rethought, include the residents 100%. Full stop.
I'm going to go on to the next question. Delia, you'll be asked to respond.
I'm sorry, is there something wrong with the, did I do something wrong? Sorry, there seems like there's a lot of--
There's no applause allowed. You said no reaction from the audience.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Please keep your applause to yourself.
Brilliant, brilliant.
Should the finance advisory committee be kept as a financial matters only committee? Or would you include design, traffic and affordable housing in that committee's scope? Delia, you're first.
I'm sorry, could you just repeat the first part of the question?
Should the finance advisory committee be kept as a financial matters only committee? Or would you include design, traffic and affordable housing in that committee's scope?
Oh, yes, absolutely, hands down. And this should have been part of the process a long time ago. And I think that that's why the residents have spoken out. I think we, as I mentioned before, we have so many, so many smart residents. They do this for a living, and I think it is only to our advantage to involve them. I know that for myself personally, just having started a business, it's a 50,000 square foot, completely renovated building. It's really important to include all of that, because a lot of times the financial decisions are based on all of the things that are included in the design process. So absolutely, and I think that, I'm sure that is coming. And I think having a financial only is not, is not good for the town of Summit.
Thank you. I'm comfortable where we are. The financial, the financial team that we're going to assemble, they're a talented group. They're motivated to help us. If they can't make the numbers work, then there really is no need for a design group. We're going to be really back at the drawing board. So let's just find out. If they can make numbers work, then we'll move on to the next group, and we'll invite more people in. If we lose control of this project and the property is sold, there will be no design group. There will be no financial team helping, because the other, the new owners will have all of that, and they will not, they'll build whatever they want within the zoning laws.
Well, I think we've already lost this project. And the fact that we had one bidder at the table, and we put a developer's interest in front of our residents is quite honestly very frustrating. We have lost control of this project. And as a resident, and as a resident who would be representing you, I do not want anyone making financial decisions on a project that maybe you don't want. And it is very important to me to make sure 100% that this project takes a different direction.
Danny?
Just very quickly, the law is clear. Area in need of redevelopment law is clear. One developer at the table at a time. They started off with 12 developers, and they got RFQs and RFPs. And they, and the steering committee whittled it down to this group, Toll Brothers and L&amp;M Partners. So this is all that the law allows right now. So having it open bid, no, it's not, it would be against the law.
I think you have to scrap the ANOR, start over. 100%, full stop. There was one bidder in the room. Scrap it with a capital R. Scrap the redevelopment.
It's up to the candidates. Thank you. So we're going to go on to question number eight. Name an example where the Summit Common Council looked very transparent to its residents. Name an example where, in your opinion, there should have been more transparency on the issue. Danny, if you go first, please.
That's interesting. I don't know that we have ever, we were as transparent as possible. You know, recent councils have bumped up public comment right to the front of the meeting. Years ago, I attended meetings, and council would let you wait until the very end of the meeting. And who knew how long a meeting was going to last? Now, when you show up at a meeting at 7:30, you pretty much know public comment is going to start at 7:40. Years ago, you could come at 9 o'clock, the meeting could be over. You could come at 10 o'clock, the public comment might not start until 10:30. So that's an example of making things more transparent. There's a council preview, the council president's preview of the agenda. Besides transparency, everybody runs on transparency. But I would also add to that accessibility. I think we have a group on council right now that is the most accessible that you've ever had. You can call us. You can email us. You can find, and you can find me in town. So you can pull me aside anytime you want to discuss anything that's on your mind. So I think transparency and accessibility go hand in hand.
Well, I think that obviously all of our council are volunteers, and they really are trying to do their best they can. And a lot of times, they're, sometimes our council packets are 200, 300 pages by the time they're printed out. So you really do have to be paying attention to a lot of the issues. One of the issues that I was frustrated with around transparency, and again, it might have been during the pandemic, was the gas-powered leaf blowers. The business owners were very hurt by the lack of communication initially on the gas-powered leaf blowers. And that was, for me, transparency. That was one of the first things that I've noticed. Obviously, the Broad Street West, it's quite honestly alarming how many people have come up one after another after another. I mean, Millie Cooper's in the audience. Al Dill's in the audience. When you look around, and these people are passionate about this stuff. They want to be involved. They want to be a part of the project, of the plan. It's important. And as Mike McTiernan says, it matters. Your voice matters. It matters.
We will go on to question number nine. If elected, what is the one thing you hope to accomplish during the tenure? Delia?
I think that's an easy one. I think bring some civility back to Summit. I think there's way too much, way too much groupthink. I think that it's, we're getting a little bit better. But I think that we should, we are all neighbors. We should not have divisive local politics. This is insanity. All of our children go to school together. We should only be focused on making Summit better. 100%. I want you to walk in that council room if I get elected, and I want to see a smile on your face. And I'm going to smile back.
I'm really proud of the accomplishments that I've been able to push forward through my first term. My focus in my second term, as I said, will be to capture federal grant money from the infrastructure bill and the Inflation Reduction Act, so that we can have, we can get our fleets changed over from gas-powered vehicles to electric. It's really expensive, and it would be unaffordable for this city to take it on. There's going to be grant money available. I'm going to fight for it so we can have a more renewable future. So that's it. But that's all I have.
We have a few more minutes. Do we have extra questions? But we'd like to know, this is basic. All right. Very good. So we're going to, we're going to move on to closing statements. Each candidate has two minutes to make their statement. And I will start with Danny.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Catherine. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. Thank you, Delia. Thank you to all watching here and at home. Finally, thank you to my wife and my children, who have supported me every step of the way. Running for reelection has allowed me to reflect and take stock of my first term. I am extremely proud of what we were able to get done during a very challenging time for Summit. These are real tangible things that make a difference in the quality of our lives. At the onset of COVID, I was part of a group of people who came together to save the downtown. And now our award-winning downtown is more vibrant and energetic than ever. In my first run for council, I promised to address our outdoor recreation spaces, and I delivered on that promise with a major investment in the town pool and new basketball courts at Tatlock and Memorial. As Chair of Parking Services, I directed the city to remove the deForest Lot gates, which saved Summit $750,000. We are continuing to plant trees to enhance our tree canopy. We have a tiny forest. We are composting food at the transfer station. We live in a more welcoming community by celebrating Pride every June, lighting a Hanukkah menorah during the holiday season and celebrating Juneteenth. These are just some of the things I'm most proud of. But there's work to do, and we have challenges to overcome. And if you reelect me, my focus will be on building strong incentives on Broad Street West, more investments in our playgrounds and parks. We need to capture federal infrastructure grant money to start converting our city fleet of vehicles to electric. And I will continue to attend Union County meetings to advocate for you, the people of Summit. Thank you, and I welcome your support and asking for your vote.
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this tonight. And Danny, again, thank you for your service. The city of Summit could fundamentally change forever. Maintaining historic Summit is essential. You have my commitment to maintain and protect historical Summit as the city we choose to live in and raise our children. I encourage everyone, as you leave the library tonight, based upon what was originally in the letter of intent that put the developers' interests in front of residents, you would literally run into massive apartment complexes smack in the middle of this lot and other city blocks. The next time you go to the train station, think about the leaders who brought to put the tracks underground. It wasn't easy, but to use Millie Cooper's words, they fought like hell to get it right. Millie has reminded us there was a proposal to put City Hall on the Village Green, but they had to change direction due to public engagement with people who cherished green space where the community comes together. The possibilities for this space are endless. The more I door knock, the more that's crystal clear. Imagine how fabulous it could be. How about the People's Park or Village Green 2, as mentioned last week? How about a bandstand where all of our performing arts and musicians could perform? This could still include housing or recreational things for us and our children to enjoy. A few weeks ago, I walked around with an artist and another resident. I will be able to show you tonight renderings of what is possible. With your input, over the next few months, we can make anything possible. One thing that is abundantly clear is that the silver lining of the Broad Street West, as John Griffith mentioned in the council meeting last week, it has been the one thing that has brought Democrats and Republicans together for the first time in a long time. If Broad Street West is such a good idea, put it out on referendum and let the people decide. I ask you to put partisan politics aside on November 8th and join me and my team of Democrats, independents and Republicans to put partisan politics aside for local elections. I will work hard to earn your vote, and if elected, I won't stop door knocking.
Thank you. We just have a few more words. Thank you for joining us for tonight's Common Council Forum. Thank you, candidates. Thank you, timekeepers, as well as Hometown TV for sponsoring this event. A recording of this forum will be available soon on HTV as well as YouTube. Don't forget to vote, on or before November 8th. You may do so in one of several ways. You may vote by mail. If you ask for a ballot to be mailed to you, it should already have arrived. It may have already arrived. If you would like a mail-in ballot, you go to unioncountyvotes.com and download the application. You may vote early, in person, from October 29th through November 6th. Find times and locations on unioncountyvotes.com. And you may vote, no, or, sorry. Or you may vote at your usual polling place on Election Day, Tuesday, November 8th, from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. That concludes our evening of voter education. Thank you so much for coming.